How do you start?
I don't know, I don't know. It just works by itself, man. Going forward, we can just type slash record and it will do it. No need for an external app or anything else. Me six will do that.
Oh my god, that's great. Okay, so are recording? Can you do that?
You can start. Yes, I will start. I will start recording. You can stop, man. No need. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, good. You are welcome, man. Just remind me at the end to to stop the recording for the file to be saved.
Okay, perfecto. So we're here. Professor, everyone, good morning. Let's just kickstart this town hall. Metakan, Carlos here, present. But professor, I'm passing them.
Yes, of course. How are you guys? How are you? Um Richie, are you there?
I am here, yes.
How are you feeling today, Richie?
Feeling amazing. All good, all great. Already had my morning coffee, so I'm excited and ready to go.
Okay, nice. What about you, Metakan? How's everything going right there?
Also here enjoying delicious coffee in Costa Rica, but excited to get the day going.
Awesome, awesome guys. So plenty of stuff that we are going to talk to today. Um, we know that the community has a lot of questions. We have been making a lot of progress regarding the projects, the initiatives, what's coming for the community and everything else. Um, but we are going to start with Richie, that is going to give us a little bit about the agenda that is going to happen today in this town hall. So Richie?
For sure. Thanks a lot, professor. So we are going to start with the winners of the Degathlon and Frickton, right? We're going to start announcing those. So Frickton, if you want to take the mic, go ahead.
Okay, so this is, I'm always happy to announce.
And also, and also Freak, how was the Degathlon, like in general? How did you feel about it?
Okay, so for me, the Degathlon was like really, really, really exciting. We introduced this game called Smash Cards. And chess came on board, but we, the chess came back as lessons, like Kix was given lessons, so I really liked it. I could see like during the Degathlon, like there were like a bunch of challengers, you know, like going after Dante. And it was, it was kind of like, oh, Dante's gonna lose the heart. Dante's gonna lose the heart, but then he started picking up. And I can say like Dante is really fast with that Arctic bot. But what gave him the advantage at the end was Smash Cards. So because Smash Cards gives awards like first, second, and third positions with three points, two points, and one point. So you can either get, like, if you use Smash Cards the right way, you can and for some reason, everyone forgot to attack Dante. And it became like a massive fight between everyone. Dante took the lead. Like, he didn't, like, if I was contesting, I would have won. And I would have like kicked Dante's rear, but but Dante wanted to the heart of Dega home again. And he's like, he is the winner. He was the winner.
I gotta, I gotta. It was an amazing, amazing game. Free, congratulations.
Somebody's telling that Dante, that Dante is a bot. Has anybody seen Dante in reality? Has anybody seen him in reality?
Dude, but we got a challenger because Softa is right behind Dante. Was right behind Dante. Softa, Softa, like Dante was six points, Softa was five. You know, and I think Softa could have taken the lead, the lead there, but we killed him too. And then the third squad is kind of like divided among four people, which are Makino, April, Isaac, and Ar. So it's split up because all of them have one point. So we have first position Dante taking the Dega heart again. Remember, if he takes it for the third time, it feels like messy with the workup. Uh, Softa challenging Dante, hopefully next tournament. Softa will be like on the lead to that. And then we have Makino and Isaac are on there. Those are the winners. It was a really, 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 really good tournament. And I hope next week we get to test other new games. Gonna stay and we're working, we're working with Zadag on an economy-based game, which remember you can like open in the market and open you know, then having activities like to make money and buy some stuff that you can use to entertain or grow at each other, others like. So hopefully, tournament, we will have that place that is that's what it is. So congrats to the winner.
Congrats, Freak. Just in case, sometimes, I don't know if maybe you take, you get too far away from the mic, but it lowers the volume a bit, so just for you to be aware.
Oh no, I know what it is.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that sounded much better. Because sometimes you're saying something and I'm like super engaged into it and then lowers the volume, so I'm like, no, I want to hear it. So, okay, great, thanks. And yeah, congrats to Dante. Personally, I participated and love Smash Cards. I think it's one of those great games that the learning curve is like, it's very, it's very easy, it's very fast to learn, but still you can get very good at it if you play more. But it's great that somebody just joining a Degathlon can go like, okay, what is this? Hmm, it's web-based, so you don't even have to install anything if you want to. So just by, okay, I saw everybody was playing, I was like, hmm, new game, let me try it out. And in like a couple of minutes, I was already shooting rockets at Frickton. So that was super fun. And I have to admit, I did train a little bit afterwards. So let's see, next week you have another contestant.
I have to train also. I haven't trained, but it was natural to me though.
Yeah, yeah, it was amazing. I think the worst of them, I have to say, sorry about that, but it was Rabbit King who was figuring out the weapons as we were mid-tournament. So the result was not the best, but I know he's going to excel at it next time.
The last ones will be the first ones, remember that.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay, so remember for everybody here who did not join the tournament, join next time. We're talking about very easy to play games, but also very engaging and very fun. We play them here at Discord. And join the Degathlon and also the Gaming Fridays, right? But the Gaming Fridays is more about streaming all sorts of games. The Degathlon is about a series of games that when, or even when you're the winner, you receive the trophy of that Degathlon games. And the trophy is what we call the Heart of Dega. So join us next time. This week we have no Degathlon, but next week we will have a Degathlon. So we will announce it in on social media and remember to be there is going to be super exciting, super fun.
Richie, if you let me add something, you spoke about the DGG. And the DGG Fridays for me is for us to connect, to create friendships, to be ourselves, to allow ourselves to be ridiculous, you know? And to experiment, to see what other people are playing, play together, discover new games, you know? It's about us and our community, you know? So for me, DGG Fridays is kind of like that moment of the week where I can say, wait, I'm just gonna play for the next three, four hours with my friends and have fun and enjoy and yell and cry and do whatever, you know? It's like, it is kind of like a freedom moment and yeah, we're gonna play PUBG, yes, this Friday, let's play PUBG this Friday. But it's about that. It's about showing others what but just being you is and creating new friends and creating new connections in this tribe. So for me, it's a very special moment. I had to add that.
Yeah, for sure. It's like, you know, thank God, thank God it's Friday? No, wait, let's crash that. Thank God it's DGG, Gaming Friday. It's like, it's Friday, the day to unwind and relax a little bit and play some games. But the Degathlon is the one that you usually train for and you're like, you know, looking up to win the trophy. So yeah, very different events. I just wanted to make the, you know, the difference between they're both about games, but they are about really something else. So thanks a lot for adding that, Freak.
Can I add to the something else?
Oh yes, for sure.
You know, this is not just a place to make friends. I mean, it's like Freak, you and I like connected really hard through our games. And then we ended up collaborating on a couple of projects together, you know, like you doing you doing your artwork and, you know, things that you were doing. And it's like, you know, coming in cold into a community where nobody knows who you are and nobody knows how to work with you and nobody knows what your skills are. And then being able to connect through games and then build greater relationships. Um, it's very important to, you know, find a place where we can come together, to get to know one another. And, you know, that is, you know, that's a good place for you to come in and like, you know, participate and get to know one another. And, you know, then it goes, it just doesn't go to friendships, but it can go to something much greater on the Dega platform.
Yes, sir. You're totally right. And those connections are special. And we're in this journey together, so finding that people you connect with that you can, you know, like travel beyond, beyond where you are at now is is really important. And also creating those creative moments and rituals. Is what it, totally agree with.
Okay, somebody else has something else that they want to share before we go ahead and announce the winners. Maybe Dante, who actually is now the holder of the trophy of the Degathlon games for two consecutive rows. He has the heart already, still again. Dante, are you able to talk? Do you want to say hi? Share a little bit about the event? Or if that's not possible, don't worry.
Hi, hello. Hi. Hi, everyone.
Hi. You have here a lot of like fans, maybe people that love you, maybe people that hate you because you won. But we all love you, of course. Go ahead.
Yes, that kind of happens. Yes. Nice to meet you all. Yes. So what are we announcing on the winners?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just wanted to say hi and thanks a lot for joining. Let's see if you keep the trophy again next week. And now let's go ahead, yeah, for the winners. Freak, do you want to take the mic for this one?
Thank you.
But I already announced the winners. Like, the first position.
Okay, sorry. I thought there were like some other mentions, but then.
No, 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 no. It's like, first position Dante. Challenging behind him is Softa with just one point away from Dante. And then in the third position, we got, we got split it among four, but I think it's it's Dante and Softa. Remember, we're gonna, we're gonna be asking for some details to give you the rewards. And I would dare to say only Dr. Sadek can ask you for those details, you know? So if anyone else is asking or asking for their information, but we need that information to give you the parts and all those things. So that can I say is only you or for security reasons? I don't want, you know, like them getting DMs from random.
Uh, what did you ask me, Frickton? I did not understand.
Oh, the details to give the rewards and the NFTs for the merch and all those things, I would say like only to you. You know, it's like you're allowed to message them about that.
Uh, yes, of course. Yes. First of all, congrats to Dante who won two times, but you won only one NFT, Dante, right? Uh, anyway, um, and second, sorry, I could not join the latest Degathlon. I had some urgency. And regarding that was, we already, give me a moment, please. I will remove a notification. Okay, and regarding that was, we already distributed the experience. You saw Dante got the 6K experience in Discord and everyone got his experience. And we will have, yeah, Frickton, yeah, a lot. 6K is a lot. And we will have, of course, a formal announcement for the winners. I thought I have to keep it until the day before the Degathlon, so we we remind people that about the previous one. And regarding Dante, regarding the NFT, Dante, please direct message me to talk about the reward. It is an NFT that will be redeemed later for a T-shirt, I believe, yeah. Um, and we will also have the, what we call it, that Discord coin, what we call it, Frickton. Um.
The arcade, the arcade points, the Dega arcade points?
Yes, 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 yes. Give me a moment. What you call that? Uh, yeah, yeah, I will go to Meesez. Um, give me a moment. What, what the, ah, yes, that, that Dega Arcade point, yeah. The Dega Arcade point, we will distribute it later when we finish the economy of the game, we will implement in Dega. Uh, I need to discuss first with Frickton how we should do it later and we will distribute that reward also, guys. Because we mentioned already the reward in the first announcement of both Degathlons. Uh, I think that is all I can say, Frickton.
Thanks a lot. So remember, Dr. Sadek is the the one in charge of contacting you. Don't trust anybody else if somebody is like texting you about giving you details to get the Heart of Dega. That is probably not the real Heart of Dega. Dr. Sadek is the official one contacting you and he will reach out, talk with you, get your personal information. Or at least, you know, the information necessary for you to receive your prize. And then let's look forward to the next game and train hard for it, right? Okay, so moving forward, we have a very interesting news to share, very cool stuff as we, as we shared before. We want to talk about something we have been calling maybe like a power, the power system, like a gamification system that we want to start planning and implementing in Dega. So maybe for that, Professor, you want to start talking about that because it's a very exciting, but a broad topic. So let's start maybe sharing a little bit about it.
Actually, the right person to talk about this is Metakan. So Metakan, please, share the good news and what's cooking, what has been cooking in the community regarding the power system.
Okay, there. Yeah, happy to do so. So well, actually, a first parenthesis there, just a quick announcement. So for the next tournament, we're actually going to do a cash prize paid in staple coins of $150. So next time, besides, you know, the experience points, the trophy, you're also going to get that crap, that cash reward, right? So I hope, I hope all of you are ready for the next competition.
Yeah, and also, I'm sorry, and also many of these things that we're doing that because plenty of more people are coming to this tournaments. So tell your friends, tell the people that there's going to be those rewards, there's going to be the cash prize. So we are getting like a bigger impact of this tournaments, which is really important for for that community, for us, for getting the members and everything else. So, yeah.
All right. Well then. So yeah, looking forward to seeing who will take that, that prize money. Um, going back to what Richie was talking, right? So basically, a power system is a concept that you usually have within games or even in anime shows, right? Like it is how the games are structured in terms of competition or how stories take form when they're about battles, right? So probably the most popular power system ever is the Dragon Ball Key, right? Very simple, very straightforward. Some are a little bit more complicated, like the Chakra System in Naruto. Or when you go into power levels in World of Warcraft. So for Dega, as you all know, and something we've mentioned a few times is we, we see the future, the gamification of everything, right? So you're not, everything that you do, from your education to the way you exercise, to how you work with other people, is going to be structured in a, in a, let's say, gamified way, right? And that word is overused, I believe, sometimes. And what does it actually mean? It means that it kind of guides you in using rewards and let's say challenges, right? And challenges in games are created in a very, let's say, step-by-step basis, right? In the sense that, no, you're not gonna go to the final boss in step one, right? Like games are structured to guide you through that, right? Which is something that weirdly enough, you know, we don't make, we should make that for everything that we do in our society, right? As humans, like our education should be structured in that way, right? It's sometimes we wanted to do that, but for some reason they can't manage to get it right. Um, but the point is that the, one of the key reasons that we love games isn't only, you know, the fact that it's something that is fun, though obviously that is a big part of it in terms of the story, but it's also the way that it's structured, right? Like how it basically does, it holds your hand and takes you through a journey, right? That's structured in the right way, using rewards and challenges, right? Because for example, if a game just started to give you, you know, let's say, superpowers and upgrade they're standing still, right? Let's say you don't do anything and you're leveling up. That's not rewarding, right? Like you're, even if you're saying, oh, I'm making progress. Well, I mean, it's progress that doesn't mean anything, right? Because you haven't, you haven't challenged yourself to surpass a given state, right? So everything that we're gonna do in Dega is going to be gamified, right? That's what the power system is for in essence. And it's kind of like the first step towards this future of a gamified, of a gamified world, right? So what does that mean? Well, you've already been kind of playing something similar, right? It's similar to how you do the quests right now with Crew Three and you're getting XP's. Um, and now we're going to introduce the Dega Arcade points. Just for everybody to know, those two things are kind of like like a sandbox version of what the power system will be, right? So once we release the power system, it'll be structured around challenges, right? Similar to the quests we're doing, activities and things that generate value for the entire Dega ecosystem. And that point system that you'll be receiving will be, let's say, um, it'll be MOP class, right? Because right now you only get XP's. But you're going to start getting different classes of, let's say, rewards, which will allow you to compose. And all of this is going to be web-based, right? Tokens, NFTs. But with those rewards, you'll be able to start crafting NFTs, Dega NFTs, right? Like items. And I'm gonna reveal only two of the things that you're gonna create. You're gonna have many more things, but just to give you like a small spoiler regarding that, you're going to be able to craft items and mechas for, which we're gonna find another word for that, but in essence, it's going to be items and mechas that you're going to be able to equip or apply or use with your avatar within the Dega ecosystem, right? And then these items, they'll be, they'll have function in games, right? And similar to the ones that you're playing right now in mini-games. But they also have functions within the real, let's say, tangible actions within the Dega ecosystem. For example, right, the Dega DAO and voting in there and your ranking within Dega DAO. And also around the Dega infrastructure, like the setting up of the blockchain nodes and those supporting the blockchain consensus itself, just like every other decentralized systems. So we're basically tying together real tangible economic actions within a gaming system that you're allowed to play, right? So if you all recall correctly, for Dega, Metaverse means blurring the lines between the physical and the digital worlds, right? So these mechanisms that we're creating with the Dega power system basically allows you to kind of like blur the lines between, let's say, quote unquote, work or let's say value creation and gaming and engagement, right? So every step that you take in Dega, be it winning a tournament, right? Or helping us grow our community, or if you're a developer and you're coding something for the system. Or if you're setting up full node, all of these things will be represented in a power system that'll allow you to level up, right? So unlike, you know, most of the things that we do in life, this will actually quantify, right? The value that you're building within the ecosystem, right? And in the future with our partners as well and other companies that are going to be joining. But in essence, it allows you to track and grow and visually represent that to everybody, right? Um, so yeah, that's kind of like the purpose of it. Um, it's, I'm explaining at a very high level and somewhat abstract, but everybody here is a gamer, so I know that you guys understand what it means to, you know, do a quest, level up, grow, craft items and then have that participate in not only the game, but also in real world activities, right? So that's being designed right now and we're kind of like, everything that you're doing right now when you guys play games, when you're using the XP's, when you're using the arcade points that are going to be with these, all of those things are going into, let's say, a feedback loop for us to design these mechanisms, right? So yeah, that's basically what we're focused on right now. And it's going to be the underlying, let's say, engine powering all the Dega initiatives across the board.
You know, that's, that's do you hear me, guys? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so that's just amazing, guys. It's amazing for so many reasons, but like the first one for me is that this idea of the power system, like the good thing about Dega is that we share what we have in our minds, right? We don't wait until everything is done perfectly. We don't wait until the product is fully ready. But we share this idea and the feedback from the community and the feedback from the tournaments and everything that is happening is actually building this product, you know what I mean? Building this system. Because it comes from sharing and thinking out loud. This high-level idea that Carlos is sharing is exactly the process that is moving Dega forward. So that is just amazing. The second thing is about the huge potential that this power system has. Basically because he's taking gaming into the next level. He's not just saying that we are an infrastructure gaming company, but that we are gamers and our everyday life, collaborating around Dega, around the system, around everything that we do, is gaming fun, which is like the ultimate goal that we have. Um, and I feel very happy and very grateful that now we are starting to see how that can come to life from this idea of the power system, which is quite amazing. And I believe that has a lot of potential. Um, so thank you for hearing that, Carlos. It's really great. Richie?
Awesome.
Happy to take questions as well if something wasn't clear.
Richie, are you there?
I see he's unmuted, but I don't, I don't, I don't see his mic.
Oh, please, Freak. You can continue, so.
Now, one of the things I wanna add, Metakan, that is like killer. You know, that's a whole other level. I've been in a lot of communities, I've been on a lot of projects, and I think that's empower the community and empowering people to give to the community, you know? To, like, if I'm creative, I'm giving creative processes, ideas, videos, memes, bringing people over, all those things. That is value, you know? Because that's what you've been cultivating for years in your life. You've been training, you've been learning, you've been doing that. You've been training, you've been learning, you've been doing that and putting that in favor of the community and being rewarded like that. I think it's unique and I think that will give Dega a whole other level of tribal engagement. And we're not talking about community here, we're talking about tribe, because tribe connects deeper than a community. Tribes connect because they share dreams, they share vision, they, they share values, principles. You know, it's because you really connect with them and you wanna survive and thrive. And I think that power system you're talking about and, 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 and it's gonna change the game. You know, it's gonna change everything, because I, I see it working. It works for the developers, it works for the creatives, it works for the gamers. It works for who wants to test, it works for people who are investing. It works for everyone, you know, that makes part of this. So, I think that is gonna be like a whole other level for for Web three blockchain gaming and it can be a game changer, or the way you put it, I see it as a game changer in the, in the, in the fucking industry, sorry, in the industry. But it gets me really excited, I cannot wait to start, you know, playing around with it and see it in action. So, thank you very much, my friend.
Awesome, yeah, happy to do so. Also, worth noting is, this is one, um, well, this is, let's say, the Dega proposal for the solution of, let's, of, um, the DAOs have in the sense, or let's say not DAOs, let's say decentralized communities have for both organizing themselves and also for avoiding, let's say, control purely based on, on capital, right, on money. Because there's been some DAOs that, you know, somebody goes in and buys a whole bunch of tokens and now they control the DAO, right? So, when you're a person that has been contributing to a community for years, right? Or um worth of, worth of, of your time and effort and also, let's say, emotional investment, it's kind of unfair for somebody to come with just money, right? And take control of the community versus those who have been working on it for, for years. So, and and that, that has played um the DAO, the, the, many of the DAO communities so far. So, this kind of like solves that in the sense that it's a, it's, it's, as Rabbit was mentioning, it's a reputation system, but it's an economic, it's kind of like a hybrid of an economic and reputation system, right? Because you do need a way to be able to capture value, right? Like, when you create something, when you dedicate your time and effort to something, that should be rewarded, right? And not only rewarded with a, let's say, a pat in the back, but financially and economically, right? So, the power system's uh objective is to be able to do both, right? Give you um economic rewards, right? Which is something that you can trade for quite plain and simply other goods and services, right? Be it in the digital world or the physical world. And then also take into account the time that you've been doing something, right? Um, so, it should protect against both uh economic attacks as well as, you know, some people also that, that are very, let's say, there are some people that are good with words, that are gifted with that and sadly, they use it for, um, let's say, um, less than ideal uh intentions. So, someone may come in and try to, let's say, rattle a community, try to create, um, uh like a, like, like a toxic environment, right? So, with this reputation system, it's also something that's up, upfront, right? So, when you see who you're addressing, right? You can immediately just, without needing to query or do anything complicated with data, you just look at their profile and you'll be able to determine, you know, what level are they, right? So, you, ha- ha- you know, I can see it, somebody's been contributing to Dega for years, for months, or they just joined yesterday, right? So, that allows you to have, um, to value what somebody is, is saying, right? What somebody is contributing. So, it's a very, let's say, multidimensional mechanism, but it'll, it'll help move forward everything related in, towards um building as a community, right? Towards working together. And at the end of the day, that, that's kind of like the key, I would say that's a key innovation that the decentralized protocols brought to our society, right? They're a different storytelling tool, a different um tool for coordinating people across the world, and this power system is just building on top of that.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, Richie, right.
Ah, okay, sorry, something weird happened, I just disconnected and connected again, and yeah. So, I wanted to ask a question, actually, in general, just for, for, for me and maybe for everybody to understand uh this. So, the, the concept, the power system is uh of, it, it's a group of functionalities, I, I would say, that are um built in the Dega platform or the Dega, you know, system in general, right? And, and it will allow games and other projects uh that, to use these functionalities to to mint and change N F Ts based on uh all this multi, multi-dimensional char- characteristics that you just described, something like that, right?
Yeah, yeah, like, everything we do, it's a open system, right? So, other people can integrate it, um, they can create their own, right? Like, for example, somebody might create, let's say, either a mini-game or a reward system based on the same N F Ts and tokens that the Dega one will have, right? So, in that case, you know, they're just integrating, let's say, an experience into what we're doing. Uh, and somebody can create, you can look at it, um, like if it was worlds, right? Like if it was dimensions or realms, it's something that's used also in sci-fi storytelling, right? So, kind of like the Dega ecosystem is one realm, right? And we will have our rules in the sense of how you earn these rewards and how you progress and evolve your items and, and mechas. Um, and then somebody else might create their own realm and just reuse our system, right? Underneath, right? And they can have different rules uh for the purpose of keeping a system well-balanced. We can't, we won't be integrating third parties on our side, right? Um, but we, but third parties can create their own realms, right? And their own versions and their own worlds, let's say, with their own ruleset. Uh, and then additionally, and they can, they can integrate ours as well, right? So, uh, it kind of becomes like the, the, kind of like the multiverse in that sense, uh, where some things can be similar and some things can be different between worlds. And uh for, for us in Dega, we have our clear-cut objectives, let's say. So, um, that's why we, we will set up our, the starting rule base, right? But yes, the, the system can be, you can think of it like an engine, right? So, you can take that engine and adapt it and use it for a different purpose.
Hmm, super interesting. Yeah, so an example that I think of all these realms, maybe something going, simplifying it to the Web two world, but um enabling new, new, new possibilities with, with the Web three world would be, then, if I understand correctly, I could like, if I build a Reddit type of messaging board on Dega and then all the reputation could be N F Ts or an N F T that, that changes over time with the information of my reputation, but I could even have reputation by topic, maybe? And then later, if there is a, a marketplace that values reputation because that, that says that you are a user that have been using services or, you know, have been vouched for by other users, uh, then maybe another marketplace that is independent of my Reddit, I would say, I'm just calling it names for it to, to give examples, right? Then it would be like, okay, if Richie's interested in, uh, I guess, in, in gaming, then in this market, marketplace, then I will give him maybe a discount or I will give him access to more things based on the reputation that I generated in even another platform. So, it could be like something that, that even builds trust or, yeah, reputation across places and experience, um, something that right now is not possible. So, if I understand correctly and it's like, maybe like an example for other people also to understand.
Yeah, you could do that and, you know, basically, you could build our reputation across, as you said, like a Reddit-type system. And let's say that you're giving out, I don't know, oh, well, a- another spoiler there. Um, so, for the power system, the way that each element is gonna work is going to be more, it's gonna be more, let's say, more extensive than what you would usually find in most games, right? So, most games do very somewhat simplistic things, like, you know, saying fire, water, wood, air, stuff like that, right? Um, in Dega, we're gonna call them actually isotopes, right? Because they're kind of, they're elements in the more, let's say, real-world scenario kind of thing, right? They're atoms with different type of, of mass, um, particles, therefore, they're called isotopes, right? Within, within the story of, of the power system. So, let's say that you're giving out um Isotope three, right? For the Reddit example that you used, or Reddit-like forum. And then, as your, you know, your reputation grows, you're getting rewarded with Isot- Isotope three and then that Isotope three is something that you can, when you reach a certain amount of it, um, you can use it to build or craft, let's say, an, an, an assistant droid, right? Let's, and let's think about it something like, similar to like the fox that we're using in Dega, right? Like, like the Dega fox bot, right? But then you can take that into a Battle Royale type of game, right? And having it with you, it gives you certain additional skills, certain benefits. It affects the probabilities of, let's say, somebody, because, you know, like we were seeing in, in the Battle Royale game, that's a good example. Because it's a, kind of like a, like a, a great nar- narratives uh tool. So, let's say that somebody comes and says it attacks you, but then since you have your, your um Mecha that you crafted with your isotopes from your reputation, it protects you, right? It gives, I don't know, every five attacks, it, it blocks one or something like that. So, basically, what you're doing in one platform can be translated into another one, right? And then when you go into this uh mini-game and you win a tournament, right? That also brings benefit that you can then reuse in the forum, right? So, we always go back to the fact that we're melding together the, what we call real-life work or real-life events with game events, right? We're breaking the lines between these things.
Very cool, thanks a lot, yeah, it's very clear now. Uh, anybody else that has maybe questions based on that or different topics? What about you, Freak? Can you imagine some cool stories, uh, some interesting narratives that you can create based on this system?
My, my imagination, I was double muted, sorry. Dude, I, 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 I'm, I'm going, I'm going insane now and, and I have like already, already ideas of, of the worlds we can, we can, we can create with this power system. I'm trying to picture it, I'm trying to picture it kind of like Carlos says, it's horizontal-vertical system. This is more a horizontal, horizontal power system. So, I think it's kind of like Pokemon kind of game or something like that. But for me, the stories behind this are, are actually more natural, you know? So, it's kind of like the way we, we evolve in life. Because we, we don't only like gain experience and gain levels, we can empower ourselves sideways by acquiring different tools, different things, you know, like, and, and getting those tools better. So, this is, i- is infinite on the storytelling, on the storytelling side. I, I am challenged right now on how to make it a simple explanation for people that are not from this world, you know, and how do, how will they understand it? And how are we gonna paint it to them? Because it is gonna be a game changer, so, I don't know, it's like, my thought is like, explaining it to my mom and my daughter. Sorry, yes.
Yeah, I would say, I would say, don't, there's actually better the way to go about it. Don't explain it, just show it, right? Um, I don't need to explain to people music, right? We don't need to talk about how, you know, the vibration of air creates sound and then talk about how your ear captures those vibrations and translates them into electrical signals and how those signals are interpreted in your consciousness. You can't even explain all of that, right? Because we don't know all those mechanics, right? Like, we don't understand consciousness to, to the fullest. But you don't need to do that, right? Like, I don't need to explain music, I just show it to you, right? I don't need to explain a movie theater to somebody, I just take them to the movie theater. So, think about it in that sense, right? So, in short, you don't explain, let's say, the Dega game, just show it to them.
Yeah, so something, something really important to understand about some of the power system as it is, um, and about the dynamic that we have, is that, as always, uh, one of the core roles of um of Metacon in this is to establish a vision of what we are going to do. Um, and this big vision, right? The high-level vision that Carlos is, uh, Metacon is sharing, is, it's something, um, to understand and to, and to figure out, like, that the future looks like that, right? Uh, but in the middle of that, we are going to be building the house that is happening, right? The progressive way in which this happens. So, at this moment, it's, it's more about excitement about the future that is coming, right? Which uh is going to be progressively implemented in the community, in Dega, in a very collaborative way, right? And eventually, we are going to see the full system in place, um, almost without noticing that we were actually implementing the system, you know what I mean? So, no worries about that, because a lot of answers, a lot of hows are, are coming into the future, right? But you're going to experience it, um, almost without noticing that we are, like, that, that community and that we are doing, right? So, it's more about the vision at this moment, uh, about the excitement of what is going to happen than to actually, um, uh, like, all the details of how this is going to happen or how this is going to work. You want to experience it uh by the implementations that are going to sort of happen progressively um to go into this vision that Carlos is sharing. I'm sorry, so, somebody was talking also.
No, my point got lost in, in the, I'd, I'd have to go back about fifteen paragraphs, so, no worries.
That's okay. I think Freak also was in the middle of like some, some vision quest, describing it at least.
What do you mean, like, vision quest, what do you mean?
You, you were talking about some ideas and, and, uh, and, and, but, but maybe, yeah, I, I got confused, yeah. I, I thought you were like in the middle of describing also some new ideas or the way you see it. Uh, what I got from it is, yeah, like, I also see it as, you cannot explain it, but because every, everybody will perceive it in a different way and, and the meaning of this new experience will be different for everybody. So, I, I think it's every, it's for, it's for everybody to decide or to, to get an, um, his, their, their own understanding of this. So, I'm pretty much in line with that, it's better to show it.
Yeah, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Metacon, but it's kind of, it's kind of a system designed to happen to you if you do the right things, kind of like in life. So, if you're right with the tribe, if you're right with the project, if you're right with what you're doing, if you're being creative, the system happens to you and you can like embrace it and grow with it. I see it as a more natural system that way. Am I getting it right or am I?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's both, it's two things, you affect the system and the system affects you. That's the, that, that, that's how life works, you know? The, you make, you can make individual choices and take, take directions in your life, but there are circumstances that happen in your life that actually constrain your choice. Uh, you know, the, the, the number of choices that you can make. So, at that point, it's up to you to choose to change your context or change the, the place that you are inside of the system to be able to continue to make the choices that you wanna make. So, it's always a back and forth, always a closed feedback in that regard.
Thanks, that's, that's.
I agree. Yeah, that's, that's very, very deep.
Yeah, it's, it's a closed feedback loop, but you can reopen the feedback loop once you, once you change your context or change the place that you are inside of the system. So, if you run into a brick wall, what are you gonna do? You're gonna keep on running into that? You're going to find a way around that brick by, you know, changing your point of view by looking at that brick wall. And yes, I've built tons of systems like this before, so I I might get a little academic about it.
Um thanks. It's it's great to have your your level of experience uh here to explain us these these topics. So yeah, sorry, Professor, go ahead. No, no, we can wrap it up, uh like. Exactly, I was going, I was going there. I think um if there's uh if there are no more questions, then I think we, it's time to start wrapping it up. Thanks a lot, everybody, for joining, and we'll see you again next week. Remember, we have other events this week, so uh be sure for to 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 join us uh on Gaming Friday, as always. And tomorrow, we have AMA, so see you there. Uh see you in all the all these other social media channels of Dega, yeah, yeah, in, well, in Discord, but also if you're in Telegram, see you there.
Thank you all. Yeah, it was a very exciting time, whole. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Bye.
Bye bye.
Thanks for everybody, Yanni.
Hey, take care. Ciao, ciao. Bye.